Brian Card.
He's absent with notification. He may be signing on later.
Michael Huco.
Yeah.
John Serentopoulos. Norm Farren.
Present.
Lorraine Lagard. And Keith Thurlo.
Present. Okay, alternates? No, we are a full house slate, right? Oh, we gotta keep one always. Right. So whose was it last time? Was Norm you the last? Rain's turn. Okay, Lorraine is gonna be acting tonight then. Brian's on the... supposed to be calling in, so...
Yeah, he may be calling in. I don't know if he will or not.
Well, we'll point you as an alternate as well, and if he comes in, then you'll relinquish, relinquish back.
We're gonna wait for a checklist.
My wife tried that. It didn't work. Okay. Any addendums to the agenda?
No addenda.
Okay, these letters here are for the...
Those letters, they all have the application number on, on them to which they apply. So as we go through the applications, we can
Okay.
Deal with them at that time.
All right. Citizens comments on items not subject to public hearing. Public comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comment must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public comment received will be posted on the town's website, killenlyct.gov. As this is a hybrid meeting, citizens can participate in the citizens comment by webex, joined by phone. Access code 2631-679-2684. Okay. Any... How come I just... any comments, uh, public comments that anybody wanna make not related to any public hearings tonight? I take that as a no. Good. All right. One more piece of literature. Public hearing comments can be emailed to publiccomment@killenlyct.gov or mailed to the town of Killenly, 172 Main Street, Killenly, Connecticut, 06239. All public comments must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Public hearing comments received will be posted on the town's website, killenlyct.gov. To participate in public hearings, the public may join the meeting via telephone while viewing the meeting on Facebook Live. To join by phone, please dial 1415-655-0001. Access code 2631-679-2684. Okay, special permit application 251347, Nautilus Botanicals LLC, Hartford Pike LLC owner, 738, 750, 780, 790 Hartford Pike, and 738 GIS MAP 115 lot 7. GIS MAP 130 lot 30. 780 GIS MAP 130 lot 31. 790 GIS MAP 130 lot 34.1. All parcels of zone general commercial to construct cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility continued from April 21st, 2025. Emery, just for clarification, we were talking about this last month where all this is actually happening on this one lot.
It's all happening on the one lot, and the applicant agreed that if there was an approval, it would be the approval just for that one lot versus all the other ones. And I guess, I believe, the attorney said that we would have to deny the other lots because there's no site plan that goes with the lots. Am I correct with that? Yes.
Or did you make clear in your decision that there was no approval with respect to those lots either?
So whatever motions there...
Just wanted to make clear that those are not...
Okay, I just wondered if I had to repeat all that again.
No. It, it has to stay on the agenda the same way because that's how it's been advertised. So that's, it has to stay on the agenda that way.
Got it. Thank you.
You two close together. I need one microphone.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Norm Tebow, Killenly Engineering Associates. I'm here this evening to speak on the site, site design aspects of this particular application. As you recall, at the, the end of the meeting last month or during the meeting, the commission asked for some clarification as to the, the phasing of the project, the, the order of operations, for lack of a better term, and how things were going to proceed out there because it appeared that some of the, the components that were shown on the plan just seemed to conflict with each other. So what we did is we, we broke it down to a few sheets. Sheet number two of the plans talks about, first of all, how the site's going to be, how we're gonna prepare the site for the activities that are going to, to go on on-site, which is essentially the construction or the erection of the hoop houses in order to creating, create the growing environment. So there are a lot of curbed islands throughout this whole parking area. And what we've done is we've identified the islands that are going to be removed, essentially almost all the islands in particular, in order to install the hoop houses and, and also after the, the site is completed to allow for emergency vehicle access throughout the site itself. We've, on this particular plan, we've called out for the removal of, of the curbing and the islands. We've called for the removal of two of the lighting standards. Also called for some erosion and sedimentation control, which consists essentially of installation of a geotextile beneath the grates.
I'm sorry, but, you know, I thought I saw this earlier and I didn't... still, all three maps are March 19th, and I don't see any revision date to say that they're new ones, so either... I've got all...
Top right.
So the ones in orange or...
Top, top right. Should, there should be a revision date on the top right. Do you have the...
I have some large ones that they can look at.
I've got one.
You've got one?
Okay, thank you. That's what I want.
Okay.
There you go.
Sorry for your interruption.
It's okay. We wanna make sure that we get these things clarified before we get going here. So, like I said, essentially, the, the first phase of the project is gonna be in there and essentially preparing the site for what ultimately will be the, the construction of the hoop houses, installation of fencing, things of that nature. We will, although we don't really anticipate generating any significant sediment as part of this project, we are calling for the installation of a filter fabric beneath the grates of the existing catch basins on-site. And we do have a detail for that on, on the, on page five of the plans as well. So, page sheet of the, page three of the, of the plans, we do have the, well, we're showing the location of the proposed hoop houses, which would be 30 by 100 feet. Also, a temporary office trailer, which would be 40 by, by 80 feet. And that will be removed once the, the main building, the existing commercial building is, is, has all the interior modifications that are necessary in order to run the business properly. What we've called for, we've showed the extension of utilities. We have shown a location of a dumpster pad. We've revised the screening to actually call out instead of just a general screening note. We've called out for Emerald Green Arbivide in numbers of them in two, in two separate locations in order to screen the, the business itself. I also note that the fencing around the perimeter of this, this site will be 12 feet high, and it will be slatted in order to prevent viewing within the facility itself. Also, as part of this, as part of the site development, they will be repairing the pavement where necessary in order to keep, keep a continuous surface. We'll be installing two handicap parking spaces, restriping the parking lot, installing a handicapped ramp, and, and, and putting the fencing and lighting around the perimeter of the site. Regarding the lighting, the, the, two of the existing lighting standards that are out there, they're, they're pretty high. I'd say probably 30, 35 feet high. They are not dark sky compliant. Those will be removed. No new tall lighting standards are proposed, but there will be wall packs on the ends of the hoop houses. They will be dark sky compliant wall packs. And any of the lighting that's associated with the existing commercial building that needs to be upgraded to, to meet that requirement will be done so as well. As I said, they're, they're not proposing to put these 30, 35, 40-foot lighting standards that are, that are there now. Those will be removed and taken away from the site. There is one existing good-sized maple tree that, that we located out there, and that will be, remain in place. There is no activity in that area, so we assume that, that we'll be able to preserve that tree and, and keep it where it's shown. Other than that, I think as far as the, the commer, the site design aspects of this business are, you know, pretty simple once you break it out into these, these individual sheets. And actually, sheet number four, if you move on. I've shown emergency vehicle access plan because we showed, previously, we showed a, a large fire truck getting into the site. But what we've done is we've added locations of the truck throughout the site in order to, to access around, in between the buildings. The larger, the larger separations between the hoop houses, those are 24 feet. They're, they're accessible as well if necessary. But in general, the, the site is accessible by the, by the largest ladder truck. That's a 54-foot box. I'm showing the, the radius for around the site, which is the, the largest vehicle that, that is actually, travels on the road without any kind of a special exception.
What's the space between the two, the narrower space? What's that dimension?
Those, those narrow ones are 10 feet. I did talk to Randy, Randy Burchard about it, about the requirement for sprinklers within these, and he, his, his comment to me was that he's not aware of any of the greenhouses throughout the town that, that have sprinklers in them. It is a, a moist environment as these, you know, plants will be watered on a daily basis. It'll be humid within those. They're, they're not really the type of situation that, that creates fire hazards. If, if there were some sort of a, an incident where the, the coverings or so forth on these, on these hoop houses caught fire, we are on a paved surface. We have considerable paved buffers around the perimeter of this, and we would imagine that it would be very short-lived if that happened because the, the remaining of the structure, the hoops themselves are comprised of, of metal. So there's not a lot of flammable material associated with these greenhouses or these hoop houses.
You said other towns. Are you talking about our town or other towns?
Well, in our towns. I spoke to Randy specifically about that. Like Logis, Logis, for instance, does not have, their, none of their greenhouses have sprinklers in them.
They're not, they're not having cannabis. They have other reasons in there.
Right.
My concern is...
Mm-hmm.
...and I don't believe that they have so much water they can put a fire up. But my concern is, it's different if you have a plant and it, and you, and it burns and it goes in the air.
Mm-hmm.
It's very different if you have cannabis and there's people in the area as well.
Mm-hmm.
I think it should be something like, if not sprinklers, it's something else because I think it's dangerous.
Well, there are two hydrants on the site that, that will be utilized. There's a hydrant right by the front gate, and there's also a hydrant back here. They're both, they're both within 100 feet of, of any of these greenhouses.
But then how can you know overnight by the time the fire department gets there, gets locked up? These are tents that will go quick.
Yeah, as are, you know, any other agricultural greenhouses or hoop houses throughout the town.
You're talking about food. You're not talking about something that would infect the ear around.
Yeah. Well, this is, this, this is a, a, an isolated commercial facility. You've got, you've got large elevate, elevated hills on the, on the eastern side of it. You've got considerable hills and wetlands and vegetation to the north as well. And then to the, to the south and, and to the west, it's all commercial properties. That stuff is pro, is going to just, if, if anything like that happened...
You also have wind that takes it.
Agreed.
And places, so...
Agreed.
That's just why I'm doing this.
Okay.
Keith? Just for clarity, when we refer to Randy, the fire marshal, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just for anyone that doesn't know who Randy is.
Yes, I, I apologize. Randy Burchard, the fire marshal. So...
Go ahead, continue Ben. Are you all set?
I think I'm all set.
Okay. Take a couple of things.
If I could, just real quick.
Sure.
Before we go. Nick DeGarry and Douglas Construction. I'm one of the owners of 738 Hartford Pike. Just as a, as a brief overview, I think everybody here on the commission's familiar with the property. Is that correct? Yes? I mean, right now, I just wanna make it clear that the, from a site perspective, we're try, you know, we're, we're, the intent is to be very minimally invasive. I mean, it's, it's already a parking lot. The curb islands that we're talking about removing, if you go drive the site tomorrow morning, you'll see that they're already broken down. The intent is to, you know, improve the site. What we're looking to do is minimally invasive. And, and, you know, overall, we're, we're, you know, we're here with a site plan because we're required to for special permit use, right? But ultimately, we wanted to try to provide just more clarity, more detail. Zoom in a little bit because I think last time it was just hard to, hard to see what was, what was going to be happening there. Our goal is to go through, if this pleases the commission, and our goal is to go through sort of like the site, civil site plan specific type items with myself and Norm. And then Connie DeBover is here from Nautilus, and she is the one that is most well-versed and will take you through the, the 738 Hartford Pike specific operational narrative, which is we've, we've essentially added as an amendment to the narrative that was already submitted. And she's gonna be the one that can, that can address some of your concerns as it relates to uncured, unmatured cannabis burning on a plant side, or those types of things. So we thought that'd be like an, an easy way to break up the two aspects of the meeting. We kinda have the site plan, and then we have the operation. Understand that there's a lot of emphasis on the operation and, and concerns, so...
Okay.
Connie really answered my question, but okay.
Well, no, we're...
She said you can wait until the other guy... Yeah, Connie's more suited to answer that question. Any questions on the site?
Yes. Okay, so a couple of things. First off, the plans don't really show that all the, the utilities as proposed. It just says utilities. The gas line, I think, says proposed. One of them, there's a couple that say proposed. If you just put down proposed, that makes you think that they're there. So just...
They, they, so the reason that they are the, they, they view the way that they are is that all those utilities are already present to the building? All we're doing is extending them from the building after the meter just out to that...
So from the building to your temporary building?
Correct.
They're not there?
No, they're, right, correct. They're not there.
Okay.
You wanna see that as proposed?
So put down proposed. That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
Because they don't say that. So implies to anybody reading the plan that they're there and...
Understood.
All right. You don't show the 30, I think it's a 30-inch plus, a 36-inch pipe that goes all the way through, drainage movement through the building that goes all the way under that parking lot, goes up into the wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
Should be identified on a plan. I see it on one of the plans of the existing that it stops short.
Yeah, I was just trying to get more clarity as far as like the operation and stuff. There were so many conflicting lines in the survey and so forth.
Somewhere just identify it, you know, maybe, whatever you gotta do. Just show us an outlet is, the inlet is here.
Okay.
Somehow identify it because people are gonna look at it and then, people down the road aren't gonna know that it's there.
Right. Okay.
So...
Yeah, absolutely. Like I, like I said, I was, I was really trying to focus on, you know, what we are going to be doing out here and, you know, to, to develop the site and...
Yeah, it's kinda crowded. I get it.
There were just a lot of conflicting things, and I, I wanted to make, after last month when a lot of people on the commission weren't really understanding the plan and the operations of it, you know, what we were doing first and, and how, how the, and how the construction was gonna proceed, I, I tried to clarify it as best I could.
There really should be a lighting detail, just where the lighting should be, is gonna be. I, I see your existing polls that I see the comments is gonna be removed. Also, the gates, there's no details on the gates. I don't see any details. It's just what size, you know, just for the record, we should have a detail on this, on the, other than the 12-foot high...
I have, well, I have a 30-foot wide security gate. I, it's, it's listed on page three of the plans. It says 30, 30-foot high.
Okay. There's just some kind of a detail. There's, this doesn't, to me, is not very clear. That's all.
Okay.
Should there be lighting near the gate? I'm not sure. Should there be? Can you, is it possible to put a lighting, you know, near the gates? I don't know if you need them. You're, you're working 24/7, right?
Right.
No?
No. We're not working 24/7.
I was confused here because I thought I saw that at...
And there will be, there will be lighting on the ends of the, of the hoop houses, which is about 70 to 80 feet away from the gate.
So your hours, I know it's in there a couple of different places, but it, I thought I read 24/7, so...
I think there's, I think there's reference to plants grow 24/7, but there's...
Well, that makes sense.
There aren't, right. There are, but there's no, the, the, the facility, the cultivation side and the manufacturing side are not operational 24/7. No.
Okay, and so are they operating in the dark at all?
I, I think the answer is that depending on the time of the year, they could be, and adding, adding wall packs at the security gate is, wouldn't be a problem because it's gonna have to have, there's gonna be electrical service, secondary service that'll have to be there anyway to service the...
All right. So your, your answer to my question.
That can add that, yeah.
Where the dumpster is, it looks like it could be a hazard. I, I don't know. You know, the big garbage trucks, they back out. Is that, should that be considered safe? I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure what, what you do, but I'm, I'm just throwing a question out there to you. We all know the size of these garbage dumps. They come in and pick up the dumpsters. I mean, and they're working blind. They, I mean, they back out of my driveway into the street, and it's just, cross your fingers they're not, the car's not coming, but they got good brakes.
Well, they've got a, they've got a 24-foot wide drive there to access the dumpster.
Yeah, it's kinda hard. I mean, really, for me, it's just been hard to detail, to see this, you know, especially working up in the small plans.
Right.
And the other question I've got is, should there be a hatched crossway? I mean, you got all these hoop houses. People are gonna be crossing from that to your temporary building? Is that right? Or are they gonna be doing to the main building?
So let me, let me go ahead and just, this is one point of clarification that I think I will make right now. There's phase one and phase two.
Right.
Phase one is hoop houses, temporary building, so that the, the, the organization can become operational.
Right.
Phase two, all we're doing is removing the temporary office space once the building, the interior, the inside of the building has been renovated for their operation, permanent operation. That's the only difference. So they would be, they'd be traversing from the hoop houses to the temporary office, and then ultimately, from the hoop houses to the building.
All right. My, my concern is, is once you get to that main building where your, people will be crossing a traffic path, so we can always address that at a later time. When you say that the temporary office building is gonna be tear, removed, so the vault, there'll be a temporary vault in that building as well?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Okay. Will the utility building stay, remain, or that is gonna be removed as well?
The utility building will remain. The utility building collects the utilities, and then there's an irrigation system that's housed in there. It distributes the water.
So that stays?
That stays. That stays. Correct.
Okay. The other thing is, and this is between you and the fireman, but should that hydrant on the north side of the property ended by the fence, it appears to be outside the fence, should it be outside the fence or should it be inside the fence? But, you know, or should there be access?
Yeah.
Either, you know, just, just move the fence 10 feet?
We can move the...
I don't know which way you want to move.
No, we could easily move the fence 10 feet.
Whatever's more appropriate.
That's not a problem. Yeah.
What's that?
Inside.
Inside. So the fireman says inside.
Yeah, there's, you've got the, there's, there's actually a, an island there, so it's easy enough to move it onto the other side of the island rather than the island on the side that we're on.
Just making that point.
Okay.
Let me see. So this fencing, is that gonna have the, the slats so you, no see-through or minimal see-through?
Yeah, the vertical black slats.
Okay, and no, what, the wiring on top, nothing like that?
It'll, it's gonna be per the state's requirement.
Anybody else? Questions?
Yeah.
Okay. John?
I've got three things. Are there gonna be interior cameras too? Somebody gets in, if you've got cameras at the main gate and...
Yes.
Where was the location, but...
If you're gonna answer, you need to go to the...
Seems big. If somebody got in there, you'd wanna know.
We can, we can address that on the operational side when Connie comes up.
On the agricultural, isn't that, could it be seven days a week where people are gonna be in there growing plants?
Again, Connie can answer those questions on the operations when she comes up.
And the hydrants, you know, this debate about whether they should be inside the gate, outside the gate, are they supposed to service that whole shopping complex, or is it just those hydrants there for what was the theater?
You know, the hy, the hydrants are for the, the theater and the other buildings that were back, that are back there.
So if you put them inside the gate, I mean, you know, doesn't, that creates a problem with the rest of them, you know, unless you're gonna rely on the, on the fire department having a key for your gate in case they need it for all these or something.
Yeah, honestly, I, and the front, I, I don't know what's in the front, to be honest with you. I, I didn't look in the front. I only looked at this particular portion of the operation. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, whatever's happening up front has to be separate from this. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense for, if, if there's a, if there's a fire down in, you know, the, the gym down, way down the other end of the front of the park, why would they have to drive all the way around the shop center, come back over here to hook up to this particular hydrant? It...
The question being addressed.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
There is, gone just a, per, per, like, there's a hydrant down by the gym, down below.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this point?
I have a concern about security. What do you store the product in? Do you have vaults?
So if, if, if it's okay, just so we don't have to jump back and forth, if you have any questions on the site plan, we can do that, and then that way Connie can come up. She can answer all that for you.
My turn.
Let's do it.
What is behind, between all these and your existing building? What is be, what's there now?
Back of a building up to a back of a building, and there's a...
So there's nothing...
There's a rotating wall and a fence, I believe.
So there's nothing for the noise? There's no boundaries?
No, but I think...
No trees or anything there?
I'm not sure that there's a noise.
You might, yeah, wanna consider putting trees for noise and stuff. You're gonna have noise from that building sooner or later.
Connie would have to answer that. I don't know that there's a noise generating.
And the other one is north of it, on the side of it, that, you know, what's on top?
Going, going to the north?
Yeah.
We own all the land to the...
No, no, no. North of the, of the existing building, the top side of it.
That's all wooded, the top side of the plan?
Right next to the building, what, to the fence. What's, what's, after the fence?
That's all wooded, all the way up?
You got wooded there, but you don't have wooded between the two buildings.
Correct. The two buildings are, are...
Which I would like to see something between the two buildings.
We can, I mean, we could take a look at that. I don't know that there's a, I don't...
What buildings are you, are you...
All the, all the existing one down below and your, your existing one that you're gonna modify.
I mean, this operated as a, as a theater for many years.
And they might have...
Right.
Missed out on putting barriers in there, you know?
Yeah, and I, but I, but, you know, to my point, I think that...
We should have noise by, boundaries.
A theater would, would generate a lot more noise than, than, you know, people sorting through, you know, media to, to, you know, and, and processing it.
Yeah, but you're gonna have machines in there too, so you're gonna have some noise coming out of that building.
I think, I think we have to let Connie address that.
I guess she could, yeah, yeah, Connie could introduce that, could explain that.
And have you thought about putting a... And have you thought about putting a camera on the secondary cam, uh, gate?
I think there's gonna be cameras all over this site, but she can address that.
Cause there has been homeless people...
Oh, I'm well aware.
Back there, and they're still, if I was at all these, and you see people walking up there, and I know...
I drive through.
We used to, yeah, people used to, we used to play up there.
I have to tell the same person once every two weeks, he's in there, and he lives with his two dogs and his car, and I tell him to leave.
He's been there for many years, we told him.
And we're, our hope is that with this activity and this development, we can, I mean, we've cleaned that site up now a few times, we send the, we send the dump trucks down and the telehandlers, and we throw everything away, and over time, they migrate back in.
Used to have a camper up there.
Used to what?
Have a camper up there.
Oh, there's a, there, it's one of those, it's one of those low ones that pops up.
This was a full-size one.
Oh, no, I, I never noticed one. But, you know, look, one, one of, one of the benefits to this, we need to get all through all the, the concerns as it relates to the use and the operation, but one of the big benefits that we see, outside of just the economics of bringing in a tenant and doing business, is that this is gonna clean up the site, we're gonna have a security fence, we're gonna have cameras, we're gonna have new lighting, and, you know, our hope is to, is that we won't have that same occurrence happening on a regular basis.
The rest I got for Connie, so.
I don't, I don't know if this is even the purview of this, of this board, but, and it applies to all these facilities in general, since it's still against the law federally, do we take on any liability if we approve this, and then say the, the federal government came in and, and shut it down or whatever, would the applicant have any recourse to come back on us and saying, well, you approved this, the state of Connecticut approved it, and it's federally prohibited?
I'd be a little concerned with the federal government coming in.
Yeah, that's, that was my concern.
Yeah, I mean, well, first of all, the federal government has, you know, opened the door to, has directed its US attorneys not to bring any kind of enforcement actions when states are specifically authorizing cannabis-related activities, but let's just say for the sake of argument, that, that the federal government comes and there's a change, and it makes it illegal, I mean, that'd be the federal government had done that. Right now, you operate under Connecticut law, under the Connecticut state statutes and regulations which currently make this legal, so there wouldn't be a liability on the part of the commission or the, or the town, if someday the federal government makes a change and shuts down a business like this because you've approved it. They're taking that risk on, they, they know that, to the extent that that risk exists, their, their eyes are wide open to it, as much as you, it wouldn't be your fault if something changed in the future, so.
But even, I mean, we're supposed to follow federal law, not just state, right?
No, you're not...
It's the federal government, the state of Connecticut, then local municipalities, aren't we supposed to pay attention to both of those?
Right, and the, and the federal guidance is, there's not federal law that says that land use, this industry exists in, I can't, almost two-thirds of the country now, and that, that they've been advised that, that there should not be prosecutions under federal law related to this business, so I think you run more of a risk in light of that, to say, I'm gonna deny, if it, if it meets the zoning regulations and it meets the state law with respect to cannabis facilities, to say, to deny because the fed, the federal government might change its policies and decide to start prosecuting, I think there's a bigger risk there.
Okay, so we're perfectly safe on that?
Nothing's perfect, but with that, with that caveat, I'd say, yes, you're safe.
All right, thank you.
Why do they put you in jail? Don't have to worry about feeding yourself anymore.
True.
Anybody else?
Not yet.
At this point.
Do you want me?
Yes, the chairman, do you have it?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll, I'll go on a little later, I have light issues, so, two questions, couple questions, if I may, just on the fencing, just to confirm, your detail shows the fencing being embedded, that's the case, are you willing to be embedding all the fence posts into the existing pavement?
Yes.
Okay. And just on the timing, what's the timing for phase one to phase two?
Uh, that's gonna depend on, we're gonna have to design, do the interior design for the building, submit it to the building department, get permits approvals, and I would expect, you know, anywhere from a four to five, possibly six month renovation. It's gonna be a gut, so we'll be starting from a clean slate on the inside and building it back, but I'd expect at least six months.
Okay, so just one of my concerns is, I don't know if we need to put a duration on phase one to phase two, I guess that's a question for the attorney, because we don't have any layout of the building for phase one, we just got your temp building structure, the layout you gave us in the term of phase two, so I'm glad to hear you say there is a vault in phase one, but again, a little concern is, what happens in phase two does not happen.
Under, so your, your concern is that, get approval and phase, phase two just evaporates and we don't, we don't renovate the building, and then phase one becomes permanent?
Correct.
All right, understood.
Correct.
Is there a way?
I don't know how we handle that in the approval process, but the vault, we just call it architectural for the whole, you know, build out, not a temporary type construction.
Yeah, I have a suggestion on that, and that is, if, is it really, I, I know they're describing this as a two-phased project, but I don't think it's, you should prove it that way. If you wouldn't approve the temporary facility to be the permanent facility, then I think the way I envision it is, you're approving the permanent facility, and the state law gives them time to finish the site plan, you're, most of the time, you have everything completely done before you could allow any operations. I think your permit could make clear that they could commence some of, you know, their operations using the temporary building, provided certain things are done as shown on the plans, but if, but that the approval would be that the temporary building is replaced with a fully operational, permanent building. If they don't finish that in five years, which is what the state law would allow for the completion of the site plan, I would treat that as part of what site plan improvements have to be completed for, or else the permit expires, and then the entire thing shuts down. So, that way, you're not, unless you, if you were, if the temporary structure were acceptable to be permanent to you, then treating it kind of as a phase one, phase two might make sense, but they're not proposing it that way, I don't think that would be acceptable to you. It's almost, it's more along the lines of giving them the accommodation as part of your approval, that you would allow some operations to occur before everything's complete, that is, the, the turnover of, of that other building. But if the, the building doesn't, isn't finished, and the temporary, you know, temporary building isn't removed within the statutory timeframe of five years, then the permit evaporates, and they've gotta shut it all down, or they have to ask for an extension from you. But that's, that's the way I'm, I'm envisioning addressing what I think Commissioner Card's perspective is on this, that you don't want to allow that to happen, and then the, the permanent building never get completed.
So, that means if that happened, what we're saying is, phase one can't continue on forever, they have to have the other building finished by a certain time.
Right, it's as if you're, I, I would envision just approving it...
Yeah.
And that, and then, in your approvals, some plans, no operations start until everything's done, and then they get the CO and they can start doing that. I think your approval could allow an accommodation that they could establish, if certain improvements are made, we're talking, you know, Chairman was talking about, you know, more detail on that, there's still a lot more work to do, but if you get all of the site plan concerns and the use established in a way that you, you find it to be approvable, my recommendation would be, you approve it in its completed form, that is, that the building is, is finished, and then your approval allow, makes an accommodation to allow which things can start happening sooner, and then if the entirety isn't finished on time, then the deadline of the, under the site plan statute, which the special permit would tie to, would result in expiration of the permit, and then the use wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowed anymore. I don't know if that's a way that makes, makes sense to the commission, but that was what I was gonna recommend, or am recommending.
But because, because they're doing, essentially they're doing full operations, just a smaller scale in phase one, they're smaller building, I think it's what, fifty by eighty, right, forty by eighty building, and the permanent building is fifty by one eighty, would it be better off approving essentially phase one as the permit, and they come back for a permit modification for phase two? You could have different traffic flow, like the chairman said, you know, is there, should there be walking paths from the hoop houses to the permanent building, you know, how do the employees get back home safely? And again, we have no building layout for phase one, so it seems like a hodgepodge, I'm not quite sure how this does happen, as presented, at least from phase one, phase two approach.
Only part that concerns me with that is, is how do you put a time limit on, you're allowing a use that's not, that's really not finished. You're allowing it, I mean, if, if it's acceptable to be in the smaller building and you've satisfied everything, then, then you could, you approve that. I mean, I guess the applicant can agree to a duration, if the applicant agrees to a duration, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
So, did our regulations kind of touch on this? Section two hundred point nine, temporary trailers on site for future occupants of commercial, or, commercial or industrial buildings undergoing construction activities for which a building permit has been issued, which would, in my mind, would be the renovation, or we could kinda tie i- if approved, this, to that. The removal of that is within, of the temporary building under that section, would be within thirty days of completion of the building project, or two years, whichever comes first. So, I will say, it references office use only, I'm not sure if this crosses the line beyond what is considered office use, I know we'll talk a little more about the operation a little bit, but we do have one section that kind of touches on this idea of a temporary structure i- in the two hundred point nine.
So, it's a...
And that's, that's a two-year duration. The more common one is usually a residential used structure, but being, this is essentially a job site trailer, under our regulations, it's as of right, and it says up to two years.
But Jonathan, wouldn't that be in a situation where the building that's related to the construction has been approved?
So, so that's in a situation where there's a building permit issued, so it's tied to that building permit.
Right.
So, arguably, if the building permit that is pulled is for the hoop houses, for instance, it could be that, or, or they're pulling for the entirety, I'm not sure how much the duration is between phase one and phase two as proposed, so, but the concept of this temporary use is in the zoning, so in terms of timeframe. I think the commission has the authority to set a timeframe, as long as it's not exceeding that five years, because it's tied to a site plan.
But the problem Brian's raising is, is you don't have, if you don't have enough detail on the building to approve that as part of the final use, and you're approving something less, I would want the applicant to agree to a duration, because the, the fear is, you're not, you, you approve it, you, you find it acceptable with this, the temporary, if it was related to the hoop houses, well, the hoop houses are gonna be built, and so the temporary, you've got a timing as it ties it to, to the hoop houses, but that temporary, the temporary provisions you're talking about don't relate to the permanent building, cause there is no building permit for the permanent building, so that's, that's my only concern. If they need, if you need more information, if you want, if the commission thinks that the applicant should be coming back with more detail related to the larger building, then I think the applicant needs to agree to some kind of a time, time, timeline duration for this, this phase one, and, and to come back and get the phase two. Because if they don't agree to it, then there's some troubling, there's Connecticut law that they could try to rely on and say, oh, you, you've given me the permit, I finished everything I was supposed to do in this aspect of the permit, it's, you know, I can keep doing it forever, and that's not what you want.
So, are we, are we approving the first, the, the big building, the main building in the rear, or is that part of this application? I mean, cause then in that case, we should be addressing it in more detail than we are, cause right now, we're, I think we're addressing it strictly to the temporary building and the maintenance and the electrical utility section and the hoop houses.
Then, and in that case, my recommendation, and I don't know whether the applicant would, would agree to it, there's a, there's a concept that if part, if, if an applicant agrees to something, that maybe couldn't be imposed by the commission, but they agree to it, you can't, they can't turn around and appeal on the same thing that they've agreed to. So, my recommendation is if they're coming with the, it's not, it's not completed yet, I was gonna say it's not baked yet, but that's probably a bad expression in this particular application, but if it's not done, and you, they're going to have to take, put plans together, and you wanna see more detail on the site plan, the building, et cetera, for this, the phase two, then I would recommend that unless the applicant is going to agree to a duration for this phase one, and that, that its permit will expire, if it doesn't come back and get the other, the other portion approved, I would recommend denial, but if they're comfortable with a, some period that you're comfortable with, that this permit would be valid for until, until they come back with another approval, but would you have...
Would the bonds work in that, in this discussion?
But you don't, you don't know all the details of the building to bond for.
Well, I've got more details on the new building than we do with the temporary building, so.
Yeah.
We don't really have a lot of detail on the temporary building.
I would, I would say that's, so that's just an oversight on our part, because we're, to Commissioner Card's point, you know, our, we're, we're focused on renovating the existing building, right? So, but, but I do understand completely, hey, if, if, you know, you get this and you never renovate the new building, now you're operating off of this smaller footprint, it was intended to be temporary, that's not what we agreed to, totally understand. So, as it relates to sort of like the innards of the temporary structure, everything that is proposed to exist inside of the permanent structure would exist inside of the temporary structure, we just didn't, honestly, just an oversight, we didn't think to lay that out, because we're not focused on the temporary structure being permanent at all. The intent is to become operational, salvage as much of the growing season this year as possible, right, you know, and, and once the use is approved, it allows us to spend money on full architecturals and everything else, to be able to go in and say, okay, this is exactly how this building's going to be laid out, here are the plans, we have to go to the building department, we have to go, we have fire prevention review, all that's gonna have to get done as well, before we can pull the building permit. So, all that review on, you know, within other departments of the town would have to occur, but all of the spaces, uses, functionality of the permanent building, such as a vault, secured entrance, you know, curing area, you know, shipping, receiving, all that stuff, that would all exist as part of the temporary structure. We could certainly identify that within the footprint of what's been proposed, and also, Mr. Card, you did mention that, you know, you've got a much larger permanent structure versus the temporary structure. I don't know if that's necess, I mean, Connie can answer this question, I don't know if that's necessarily indicative of a lesser amount of production, they need a certain amount of production space to manufacture for the hoop house space, the twelve hundred approximate plants that are, that are proposed, but because of the use, it's not really like we can have them occupy half the building, and then go find another hair salon and, you know, a bank or whatever for the other half of the building, right? So, we have this existing building, which I think is also important to, to point out, we're not proposing a new structure here, this is an existing building that's gonna live within the footprint of this use, so because it's this use, it kinda isolates the building to be wholly occupied by this use, and that's why you're seeing us utilize the entire footprint of that building and the proposed concept layout for the permanent structure. But again, it, it is, it is an existing building, what we're gonna be going back, back to the town for, for approvals is an interior buildout, not, not a new structure.
You don't have any intent or vision that we, we would ever be involved at a later point with that existing building, that's PNZ.
No, 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 I, I understand that, what I'm, I think what I'm saying is that it's an existing structure that we need to, we need to completely renovate the interior of so that it fits their use.
Right, so interior goes to building department...
Right.
Right.
Fire marshal and not us.
Right.
We need to make sure we address everything at this point, is what I guess I'm getting at, that's my question, anyway, in the end.
But even with, even with existing buildings, well, in our site plan, a lot of times we do get, you know, basic architectural showing, and which is, egresses and exits, you know, lighting on that building, you know, what it would look like, I understand, you may not wanna spend money on that, but typically we do get those basic architecturals, but again, I'm still hung up on, we're proving kind of a mini operation, a full-blown operation in phase one, and a full-blown operation in phase two, again, not a lot's gonna change on the site plan, but... Again, not a lot's going to change on the site plan, but there are some nuances in the site plan that need to be addressed between phase one and phase two. And, you know, all those things come in and go out as far as your temporary building, your temporary 10 by 10 shed, utility shed, again, egress points, your access across, et cetera, so.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Um, when they came here last month, the architectural for the outside of the existing building was included in those files, and that's why, part of the reason why I told people to bring last month's documentation with them. Um, they also put in last month, they also put in things that they put for outside, dark sky compliant lighting that would be along the building itself. Um, so those two things, I think that they have resolved. Would it be possible, because I understand with the temporary trailer, I'm going to ask, would the applicant be willing to come in next month with those plans for that temporary trailer so the board can look at it and determine what they need to determine? Um, and then if you say agree to a certain amount of time, I think what Jonathan was saying with, uh, section 200 is if they agree to, I don't, I personally, um, and I know it doesn't count, my opinion, um, the five years, I think it's very extensive, but I could see the two years, giving them the two years to build out this building. And I don't know if that's something that the commission would want to be, would want to agree to, you know?
Well, my problem, and like Brian is bringing it up, is we don't really have site, outside site plans for the new building. We have an interior layout. We've got architectural showing, you know, how it looks horizontally, yellow face, um, but not plan view, walkways and all that. I mean, we, we see what the plan says here, but it's really not in, as I see it, it's not really very clear.
So I think, I think because so much of it is exist, like, we're not putting a new, a whole new sidewalk in. We're modifying the existing sidewalk to become ADA compliant with two new ADA, ADA spots. You know, we're, it's, it's, it's all there already. Like, the parking lot is there. The stripes already exist, but they need to be redone. Um, so we, we weren't trying to do, we weren't trying to do all the work. We just didn't know, I think, I think we didn't realize that you would want to see improvement plans for what's already existing.
If you go according to 720.11, the site plan, I mean, it's pretty clear what you want, boundary lines and buddy property owners. Uh, you want location and dimensions of existing proposed facilities, structures, streets, drives, sidewalks, recreation.
Right, I understand, but like, the sidewalk already exists, so we're showing you details for the ADA ramps.
Right, but this is, so if we should have seen it on a plan better than it is. You know, you want to see the entrances, because you're talking about a building that was built, I don't, I don't, what, in the eighties, early eighties, something like that?
You want a plot plan.
You know.
Elevations, that's what it looks like. You said it's existing.
We want to make sure it's up to our current standards. I mean, that's what we need to do.
Okay.
Um, I'm not trying to postpone this.
No, no, I, I, I understand. We, we, I think we're just, we're...
That's why I'm saying it's just two phases.
If this, if there was no existing building and no parking lot and there were a bunch of trees there right now, I think this would be an entirely different conversation, right? Because you just have a full-blown clearing.
Oh, definitely.
Clearing these trees, grading improvements, drainage improvements, utility plan.
Correct, I get it.
We just, we, it's just an existing lot that we're modifying to, to fit the use, so...
Right, and those modifications are what we're supposed to be looking at.
I, we, I, I think just from our perspective, we thought that's what we were, what we were showing. Um, I guess we, we can go back and...
I mean, you'd like to, you've got a sidewalk here in front of the building here on this, and the ex, the outer limit of the sidewalk, which I would assume is the curb, goes down into the edge of the pavement. It actually looks like the edge of the pavement. It doesn't really look like a sidewalk because it doesn't tie back into the building like a sidewalk would. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I don't mean to be picking it apart. It's not my intent, but on the same token, we're, you know, we're, we need to look at it in a, in a completed view. So we're, we're supposed to be looking at public safety and health and welfare and all that. Those are our three criteria, and I don't see, that's why I'm asking is if you're looking at this in two phases. Phase one being the temporary building as an approval, and if it stays there forever, well, we approve it that way. And, uh, phase two being modifying this building and we approve that later at a different point, well then...
I think, I think, going back to that point, I think, I think we're open to that. That's fine. I just, I would just be, and this may be a question for a solicitor, I mean, you know, what we wouldn't want to have happen is we get an approval for what we identify in the site plan as phase one, right? And then we come back in three months, let's say, okay? Because we're, we're getting the building ready to go and everything else, and then for some reason, the planning and zoning commission has the ability to not approve phase two. Not, not, hey, there's a problem, we need to continue this, the next meeting, we need more detail. That's all fine, but you would, in your authority, essentially have the ability to not approve phase two. And which, which would, could theoretically put us in a bind, right? That would be, that would be our, my only concern with that piece of it. Now, if we were approving everything and the planning and zoning commission said, listen, we're going to approve this, we're okay with you commencing on phase one, but before you commence on phase two, there's these requirements, these conditions, we need to see elevations on the sidewalks, we need to see more detail here, more detail there, which could be brought back to you prior to it going in front of the building department for a full-blown renovation approval. And then also having some sort of a time limit on when that building is, that renovation is complete with CO. I think it, I think it sounds messy, but I think it's doable. I don't think that that would be a problem. Um, I don't want to speak for Nautilus, but I, I don't think that would be a problem from my perspective as the landowner and developer.
Well, it's, it's difficult for us to prove something that I look at as incomplete, really. You know, for the new building, addressing the new building. As in this way here, to me, it's, to me, it's a, it's an avenue...
Just from the, from the site perspective, site plan perspective.
From the site perspective, from the site. Correct, you've, you've done the interior, you've done the, the plan, whatever. Um, but in, you know, if the commission were to approve it, well, they could move, you could move forward with this under the temporary if they were approved.
So, I mean, look, I'm gonna, I'm gonna like, you know, I'm gonna go against common sense here, okay? I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate any kind of an approval happening tonight, okay? Um, you know, usually a developer won't say that in public forum. Sounds like we're going to be back here next month. So what I think makes sense is to clean this up. Um, we, we, we would just add as much detail as, as is necessary, um, because I think approving the entire thing probably makes more sense for us and for the commission, for the town than, than, than separating the whole piece apart.
Well, it makes it cleaner.
I mean, look, we're, we're talking, I, I, nobody wants to hear this. We're talking about 30 days here, right? Connie doesn't want to hear this. We're talking about 30 days. I don't want to hear it as a landlord. Uh, we want to get everything up and operational. That's the goal, right? But I think it's probably a much clearer path forward to have an approval on everything. And then if we need to implement some sort of a time limit on when phase one transitions to phase two, especially if we can work within that two-year time period, which I do not anticipate it will take that kind of time, that gives us the latitude, kind of fits within your regs, uh, you know, um, that I think would be, would probably be the cleanest path forward, you know? Again, I don't want to speak for Connie, um, but getting the hoop houses and the temporary structure up and operational in really short order to get them what they need for their growing season, that's not a big lift. Um, if they were solely reliant on the building to become operational, that's a bigger deal, and I wouldn't want to give up these 30 days. But I think that because of what they're looking to do and how it could, how it could work, um, I think that just maybe make more, maybe, maybe make a lot more sense.
I mean...
And, and just, just to speak, I'm sorry, not to cut you, it's not our intention to limit the information we're giving to you. We just, we're just trying to thread the needle of this is existing, here's what we're modifying. If you want to see the whole thing, okay, we'll just show you the whole thing. Um, we're, we're not trying to be, you know, less, less than anything, anything less than transparent with what we're looking to do on the site.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, to me, I, everything that, I think that we've talked about is stuff that could be, in the past, we've done it where you make the plans modified, they come in and the staff make sure that you've done everything, and then you have to submit, um, a plan with a, a, a signature block.
Mm-hmm.
That's not on it. So that, because I come in and make sure that you've done everything that we've asked for and verify the step with staff, and then I have to sign it, and then everything's done.
So you're, you're proposing...
I'm just saying that we've done that in the past.
You're proposing like a conditional approval based on these items being clarified?
We've done that in the past.
Okay.
But, but it still leaves the, it leaves the issue of the back building because we don't have the details that we need, I don't think, for the back building.
From a site perspective?
From the site perspective.
Okay.
So, I, I'm curious what staff would say. If someone in the town, attorney would say?
Well, one thing I was going to say is what the applicant is suggesting, although they may not have conferred, the entire team goes along with what I was recommending in the first place, is if you get the whole thing approved, then you're going to be essentially guaranteeing that, that, that temporary is going to go away and that they're going to go into the, the, the main building or else the use goes away. Whereas it, it's messier to do it in, in two parts. So if they can come in with the kind of detail that would satisfy you of what's happening on, uh, with, with the main building, you could work a timeframe in, a two-year timeframe or something that sounds like is acceptable to them, uh, the condition. But that way, you're not really approving a phase one or phase two, you're approving a project. I think that's, that's ideal.
Okay. The only thing that I would like is to have it very clarified, what you expect them to bring in for next month, or at least have a discussion with staff so we know how, what they have to do. Because we get the documentation before you do, so if there's particular items that you're looking for, let's make a checklist. And I've been trying to make a checklist now, and I made a checklist from what we had from last month. So I just want to make sure that if we go through, um, the thing about, um, the fire with that, I understand with our site plan and protection and neighborhood, but I've just checked with the attorney, and please verify with me if I've heard you correctly, that is more of the fire marshal's purview. Um, he has to make sure that things are safe and secure and protect the public health and safety on that part. Um, we can make sure, we can request that they, you know, that certain things are done. Um, but am I correct in that, the authority?
Yeah, if it's, if it's compliance with the fire code, it's in compliance with the fire code, and the fire marshal is, is, you know, the enforcement official with respect to that. So if there's any specific requirements, when something involves cannabis, um, or and that's built into the fire code, then, then they need to do that. Um, but, but otherwise, um, there's not any other specific, um, authority that the, the commission has to take on, you know, fire, fire protection.
So I, I think what, if, if, obviously, there's, there's another segment to this. Connie's got to come up and address, address any operational concerns. Um, but what would be ideal? We're talking about plants, right? And we're not, as we discussed last meeting, we're not doing, you know, year-round grow with grow lights and all that kind of stuff. This is, this is utilizing the sun seasonal growing. Um, and we're creeping up on...
Correct.
Kind of missing that first, first grow and harvest, right? So, you know, if it's possible, um, to consider a conditional approval, whether it's limited to phase one or the entire plan with a checklist that requires us to come in, meet with staff on the items that you see as, as deficient today, um, that would be sort of like the id, that would be the ideal approach. Um, just because while it may not seem like 30 days is a big deal, if we can revise a site plan and have it back in front of staff in a couple of weeks, you know, it, it gives us the ability to start to plan, to develop, to get them started. Um, but that, you know, that's, that's the...
I have a checklist.
If, 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 if you're willing to consider that.
I mean, most of the stuff that I've identified, it's, it's stuff that just needs to be changed on a plan. You know, so like the fence being moved outside to hydrant, uh, writing the word proposed on all your utilities, identifying the underground drainage, the inlet at least in a direction so it's somehow, somebody in the future can look at this and say, yes, this is underneath there. Um, lighting near the gates, a detail for the gates, uh, and to me, a crosswalk for the future building. Um, there was others, the...
Do you want me to read what I have?
To this, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention, mention the fire marshal. I would feel more comfortable if you know what you're going to be doing and our fire marshal looks at it and approves it, I could approve that easier than to wait, approve it and find out the fire marshal didn't approve it.
They wouldn't be able to build it without the fire marshal's approve it. They would not be able to get their building permit because when they come in for their building permit, it goes through the building office and it goes through the fire marshal's office. So the fire marshal would require, if he felt that they didn't have enough, like, say, I'm just going to use this as an example.
Right.
I'm talking off the top of my head, don't hold me to it. If he says he wants sprinklers in the hoop house and they weren't there, they have to put sprinklers in the hoop house. I've seen them do it in other buildings in other locations.
I think that's a good plan, except there's one thing that I haven't heard. Are you also agreeing that if you meet, don't meet that timeframe that you want to set, two years, that the special permit goes away?
I would, I, I can't, I'm okay with it as the landowner and developer and the contractor that would be renovating the building. That is a way more runway than I need to do it, but we are...
Okay with it too?
Not yet.
On the record.
Okay. So it seems to me that...
That's a yes, yeah.
If, if a list is presented, they have to comply with, uh, Annbury's office? I don't see why...
I mean, I'm sorry, not to cut you, please finish. The other thing too is just again, as the guy that would be the landlord, um, they're not going to, they're, they're not going to last as a tenant. The buildout is part of the lease, right? So this isn't like, they need to do the buildout. The buildout will have to happen. Um, that, that would be something that would be agreed upon between Nautilus and the landlord.
Brian, did you have anything else?
Um, no, I mean, the only thing that you still have is the layout of phase one. The layout that we have is phase two, not phase one, if that's my understanding.
Of the building itself, you mean?
Yeah.
Of the building itself, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I, that was one of the things that I had written down, that you wanted a layout of the quote-unquote temporary trailer or the temporary office. Um, is what you have, have for the, the layout that you have for the permanent building, does that suffice your needs? Because I would say that, that that's probably what we would get for the temporary office.
In other words...
And that's in your packet.
Right, yeah, I understand. For existing buildings, we've done this before, right? They just use a general floor plan and they're just kind of acceptable. My guess is that the phase one is going to be a miniature version of this same floor plan. Uh, that would be my guess. But again, if they're agreeable to a time period of whatever it is, that phase one will go away, because that's part of this, that phase one goes away and phase two is the permanent structure, and I think I'm fine.
And I think we can also just state for the record that the, the, the layout may be different, but the functionality of the layout would be intact. In other words, the critical components such as security access, the vault, all that type of stuff, that would be functionally existing or functionally present on the layout of the temporary structure. It's not like, using the vault as an example, the permanent structure is proposing a vault, but the temporary structure is not going to have one. Well, the use is the use, the use requires a vault, the vault will be there. Um, we, we could agree to that tonight as part of the conditional.
That was my concern, the security on phase one, because again, it's just, there was nothing, right? So, again, security on phase one to make sure that it's consistent, that was really my concern.
Can we start using a different wording instead of phase one, phase two?
Temporary building versus...
Temporary ver, building versus permanent. Yes, please.
Any other questions on the site side of it? Because I think there's going to be questions and clarifications that are required, and I think that one of the things the commission asked for last month was, um, there was the narrative, and then as we were talking through how it would operate on 738 Hartford Pike, there were some things that conflicted. So I think maybe might, now might be a good time to transition into Nautilus Botanicals and allow Connie to kind of just walk you through, hey, step by step, this is what we do, this is how we do it, and this is how it'll work on this site.
So did I hear, just, I think, and most of me also got another question, did I hear, we're going to have a lockbox for the fire department?
Oh, absolutely. All, all EMS would be...
Anything else that we're missing there? Anybody? Brian?
Let me know, no.
Well, then I can pick a few more.
Okay, so now, if you want to, we'll have, I forget her name, I apologize.
Connie.
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 Well, thank you, it was very nice to see you all again. Connie DeBover from Nautilus Botanicals, for the record. I did submit a revised narrative. I don't want to go through it all, but hopefully it doesn't really make, obviously, any changes to the operations from the previous narrative, or the hours of location. What I tried to do was just weave in, you know, how it relates to the site plan, so you had a better visual of where we would be doing things. I'm happy to kind of point to the site plan now, just to walk you through it quickly, but, you know, make sure you can hear me. So these are the hoop houses, I think we've identified that on the site plan previously. That's where the cultivation will be, right, growing the plants. And then, as we've talked about, this will be the temporary building, which is where we'll have the manufacturing and, you know, the vault. And then the permanent building, which is what you have the floor plant for, that will be taking place in here. And both the temporary and the permanent building will be what I call post-harvest, right? So that's where we have the drying, the curing, the manufacturing, the shipping and receiving, the vault, and obviously employee areas. So hopefully that helps tie in, if you read the narrative and you can refer to, right, the labels on the site plan, hopefully that makes it a little bit more clear. I also try to address some of the questions from the last time about, you know, waste or runoff water from fertigation, fire, let's see, security. I think there were questions about how long the equipment would last in a, call it, an electrical outage, waste removal and odor, so I'm happy to take questions on any of that. And then I did provide some details on the manufacturing equipment, just to give you a sense of what we would be using. I can stop there and address some of the questions you've already brought up, or I can turn it back to you guys to ask the questions specifically.
Lorraine's the one with the most pressing questions, I think, was one of them.
Well, we talked about fire, and at this point, if the plan was given to the fire marshal ahead of time and it's approved, I would feel more comfortable than to build it and find out it's not getting passed. So that's one thing. The other thing was, and I think that was answered, I was wondering about storage, did you have a vault?
Yes.
But I think he mentioned that, and you said yes?
We are required to have a vault for the finished products, so it does not matter whether it's in a permanent building or, you know, temporary, the vault is required. And also, I think, to your question about security, there will be security, obviously, at the gate, and then also at the secondary access gate, so any access points within the fence will have the security and surveillance, and then throughout will have access controls, so I think key card access. And then within the temporary versus permanent building, same thing. Those are all, especially you can imagine with the vault and the finished product, those are all highly secure, so that will also have surveillance and security, key card access.
If I can maybe just offer something to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which we are gonna require as a landlord, is that Nautilus Botanicals was gonna be required, okay, to follow all state regulations as it relates to the use on-site. So a vault as an example, security access as an example, the fence is not a Killingley requirement, it is a state requirement, that's why it's on the plan. We're gonna require that, and I think that as, you know, any approval, I think that that should be something that would be added to the approval, just that, you know, that Nautilus Botanicals will be following any state regulations required.
Absolutely, but one thing, you know, I certainly appreciate that as a landlord and happy to abide, but the state obviously does regulate us, and so before we are allowed to open and operate, they go through a pretty detailed inspection. There's a series of inspections, and a lot of it does focus around security as well as workflows, but they will not allow us to open without all the security protocols in place. So even if you didn't have a security concern, the state obviously does, so we would not be able to operate without their approval.
Any other questions?
Yes, so I think we mentioned, even though the plants are growing twenty-four seven, the cultivation operations, people will be there seven days a week from eight to five, and then manufacturing will be there five days a week from nine to five. But I, should I address some of the other questions first, or?
A moment.
Okay. Could I just, Lorraine, understand, your fire concerns, is it more about the odor, or is it the intoxication? Toxication, sorry. Okay.
I think it's both, because I think it could spread pretty quickly. And I just like to know that there's some security there. And the other thing is, yes, we compare it, you can't compare it to a greenhouse or vegetables, because when it's burning, it does something different to the air. And there are people that are not too far from there, that's another one of my concerns. So I just wanna make sure that there's enough security there that it could, it would, it would not go up in flames, there would be something there that could maintain it.
Well, I mean, I think we have to discuss that, it's subject to the fire marshal, so we'll certainly
That's what I just said, I said, if the fire marshal knows your plan, knows exactly what you're doing, and he approves it, I still would have a concern in my head, but that doesn't mean that I wouldn't approve it.
Well, I will leave that up to the fire marshal, because I think, you know, we have said that it's necessary, or it's been discussed, that it's necessary for part of the permits, which we would have to pull and get approval for, but I want to address your concerns.
I would hate to approve it and then find out the fire marshal's not approving it.
Well, then we wouldn't be able to build anything. Right? So we'd have an approval but not be able to do anything.
Okay.
Or
I'm just thinking of the safety, the air, if we had a big fire there.
I'm happy to address that.
Because there were people that live there also, you know.
So here's a good thing to think about, because we've had, we've seen other instances, not in Connecticut luckily, but, you know, if you think about several years ago in California, there were several wildfires, right? And a lot of, unfortunately, at least one of the major fires did burn through some outdoor cannabis farms. You can read the articles for yourself, but they have done studies where unless you're in an enclosed room like this and subject to a heavy amount of smoke, you won't get intoxicated. One thing you should understand is, if you understand how the plant works, right? If you were, if I had a cannabis plant right here, you wouldn't get high just from having that. But even if it were burning, you still wouldn't get high, because do you understand what decarboxylation means? Because it has to go through a certain chemical process to turn into THC to get the intoxication.
Comparing, you wanted to compare it to a greenhouse or to fruits and vegetables. I'm not gonna compare that, because I think there is a difference. And I just wanna make sure that we can avoid a pollution if we had to, but if the fire marshal agrees with it, then I will agree with it.
So any approval that happens here, regardless of what it is, or for whatever the use is, whenever we're building anything, building permit, fire prevention review, all that, so the fire marshal has to review, I mean, town engineer, building inspector, that all goes, all those plans have to be submitted to their standard, and, I mean, that would all, that would all have to be taken care of. So any approval you give is still contingent upon their review and approval.
So, Nautilus Botanicals, you have other facilities like this?
Not Nautilus, but Merida Capital does. So we have operations in several other states, including West Virginia, Missouri, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Virginia, forgetting one other. I remember, but those are the, that's the extent of our operations in other states.
Did any of those require fire suppression, or no?
No.
Thank you.
And just another point too, there was a concern about odor. I just wanna make sure, it was in your packet, but there were, there were a number of testimonial letters from other municipalities that addressed both completely open operations and enclosed operations as it related to, like, peripheral odor. Did everybody see those?
And I do wanna address, although I don't know if it was submitted, I think it was maybe, it might have been your request, Lorraine, but I did speak to Luigi Sartori from the Northeast Department of Health, I don't remember, NDDH.
That was my question.
Yep, so I have an email from him, he did, I'm happy to submit it to the commission. He said that odor was not an issue for him, because it wasn't enough of a public nuisance, and he cited a specific state statute that was fairly lengthy, but he did not have any issues.
That we would have our Department of Health know, because you said others have, I'd like to know that. Our town is saying, okay, if they are, then it's okay.
And like I said, happy to submit that to the board.
Anybody else?
Other questions?
I'm sorry, a point that was brought up last month that did not get addressed yet tonight. It was addressed in the narrative, but I think it's important to bring up, just because of Killingley's current wastewater situation. Number one, we are absolutely reducing the number of personnel laboratories in the building from what exists today to something less, number one. Number two, there was a question about the, I know nothing about cannabis, right? But there was a question about the washing machine, right? Which utilizes water and synthesizes, breaks down, whatever, and, you know, would there be any wastewater introduced into the sanitary system as a function of that piece of equipment? And after talking, I mean, I can say the answer, but I mean, I think that might be something you might wanna like bring up and clarify.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's a little bit different than the washing machine analogy, because in a typical washing machine, right, the water does drain. And this apparatus, the water is actually kept within the machine, so it's the same. I was trying to use the washing machine analogy just to help you understand, you know, how this machinery functions, and I think, John, maybe I'll just do this as a quick segue. You know, in terms of the equipment we're using, or, someone asked about noise. I might have gotten one of you confused, sorry. But, you know, if you think about a washing machine, yes, it's a little noisy sometimes when it's spinning, but it's really, what we're doing is like manufacturing, so it really wouldn't be anything noisy. I would certainly state that, you know, my opinion, having a movie theater would be a lot louder than the manufacturing operations we plan to have in the building. I'm happy to continue taking questions. I think I addressed most of the questions people had, but if I did not, then
I got a couple.
Sure.
How often do you harvest?
It's, so it's gonna be about, it's an eight to twelve week cycle for the plants to grow.
I mean, how often during the year?
Well, so it's probably two harvests at best. So if you think about roughly twelve weeks is right, four months, or three months, so and you're really only growing from May to October, so two harvests, I would say.
So you're gonna have machines in the new building, and you're gonna have probably air conditionings on the roof and stuff. And right now, we don't have anything behind it for noise abatement.
Thank you.
There's already HVAC
There are existing rooftop units on that building now.
Right, but I'm just saying, we don't have anything between the two buildings, between Aldi's building or
So there are, I mean, you say nothing, there is vegetation back there, there are trees between the two buildings.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, no, so, I mean, I'm doing this kinda for memory, because I
No, there are, I remember there's
I couldn't remember.
No, there are trees, but you're also talking about like the back of Aldi's and the back of our building, and then there's a retaining wall, and there's trees there, and then there's
Okay, so there is some noise abatement, stuff there.
Distance too.
Right, and if any of it gets damaged, you will replace during
Anything that's on our property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's anything that's on our property. I mean, assuming the fence line is the property line, there's no trees between the fence and the building. The only thing that's back there, which is probably not functional at this point, is there is an old generator that's back there. But other than that, both buildings have rooftop units, and there is vegetation, fully grown trees between the two buildings.
Okay.
But it's not like, it's not like the wooded area.
No.
Just to clarify, yeah.
Yeah, as long as something happens and something damaged gets done there, you probably replace it.
Sure.
If you cause the damage.
If we cause the damage, sure, that's fine. I also think, we could also predicate that on if there's ever a noise complaint from Aldi's, right? Because that would be our, that would be our butter, we would have to address it with Aldi's, I would think.
Right, and you've got residential around too, you know.
Not near this building.
Oh, they're not that far away. You look, and they're not that far away, you got, believe it or not, Hartford Pike is not that far.
We own everything, we own the next thirty-plus acres to the east.
If you cut through in the back of there
Going north?
Going east.
Going west?
East, going toward Hartford Pike, toward Providence Pike. There's not that much distance to those houses back there.
Okay.
And if you go north to Putnam Pike, those houses aren't that far. If you, you know, if you look at it, overhead rise, I don't think it's that, those houses aren't that far from it. That's how they keep, you know, the kids, our kids, and all those kids, we used to cut, and that's how they played up there.
So I think, you know, the rooftop units that are up there are obsolete as it relates to their use, because their use is gonna require certain filtration systems and everything else, right? So the existing rooftop units that have worked for tenants that we've had there in the past, we haven't had any noise complaints yet, and I think those rooftop units would be the only exterior noise of any decibel level that could potentially create a problem, and we haven't had an experience with a noise problem yet. But to your point, I mean, if there was damage that we caused to trees on other properties, or there was a noise complaint, I mean, I think that we certainly have to address it.
And the generator part, you're figuring if you lose power, you go out and get a generator.
That was something that
Yeah, I addressed that in the narrative, so our security equipment has seven-day backup battery, so we would certainly have enough time to get a generator.
Hopefully. You gotta, hopefully, you know, if everybody else is off getting generators, and where are you gonna put it?
I think we have plenty of spots in asphalt.
In phase one, it would need to go near the temporary structure. In phase two, it would need to go near the existing transformer, which is on the southeast corner of the building, where the utility connections are coming out of.
Okay.
Michael, you may wanna look up, we have GIS.
And again, there is an existing generator on-site, there's your tree line there.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
And there's a, that's just a truck just squatting on our property, just right there.
Can you back out from that too?
How far is the houses?
Towards Route 12.
Yeah.
So, right, so can you point out what we own?
Yeah.
They own that?
Is it all under Hartford Pike LLC?
Yeah.
So Hartford Pike LLC owns all the ones with the little blips.
Little green.
Yep, all those properties. So the next closest house, seven ninety-eight, maybe? And we can, this is GIS, Joe Killingley means get it surveyed, you can talk to Norm.
How about the ones toward Putnam Pike?
That's also, the elevation difference between that building, up over that hill and back down to that property is extreme.
That sure cut out the noise, I would think, yeah.
Those are office buildings.
This is the first one that's going through a commercial building, but a thousand feet, over a thousand feet.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Nope. John, or Brian? Brian?
No, no questions on the app. I did have one more question, since John has brought it up in the chat room.
Yep.
If I can bring it up still.
Sure.
If we can just add a note on the plans that it's found to meet the separation requirement of 567.2, 1A?
Is that it? Amber, are you, is that, or should we be reading this in?
You did have, or not just have it? We do have, Mr. Card?
Sorry. Mr. Card did give us some comments, but he came on, so his comments have already been written into the thing. We did receive some comments from Kathy Fedor from 107 Primrose Crossing. She had a concern about notification placard. I did show that to the town's attorney, and I did show him pictures of the placard. Her concerns with traffic congestion, valley road intersection, poor traffic control. What happened to the unfortunate people camping at the location? And does the cost benefits provide real value to Killingley? So they were just, those are just some items that she had.
So you get taxes, tax revenue will be generated for the town?
Yes. Could I, should I address the traffic or no?
It's up to you.
Well, I mean, the traffic is really employees because we're not retail. So I would say that we're, just like the bathrooms in the sewer, we're... It's even less of an issue because it really is truly employees because, again, it's secure and access controlled. So, no offense, we just, we don't want visitors.
I mean, the former, the former use, when we bought, we bought it from Berkshire Bank, and up until the point where we had it delayed closing because they were utilizing it as a training center. So they would have, you know, when we walked through, we saw all the desks. I mean, they had classrooms with 50 seats in each classroom, you know? So, I mean, there could have been, if people carpool, 50 cars on a daily basis for employees coming for training. And we're, you're talking about 10 to 12 employees. Yeah, so I think, I think there's, this is a reduction in former traffic.
Okay, that pretty much addresses everything. So the town will end up getting revenue from the sales at all, or is that just the state, or how's that?
It's mostly the state, but then the town does get some revenues as well.
Because the state gets less money. Okay, any other questions from anybody? Or public, just a minute, I'm going to open it up to the public. Just make sure, staff, anything? Commissioners, one time? Town attorney, are you comfortable with what we're...
Yes, yes, it sounds like the direction the commission's going along is the lines that I was suggesting in the very beginning, so yes.
Okay. Let's see your hand, okay. Public, for or against, anybody want to speak? Please. You don't have to, you can sit right there, you got a mic, that's all right.
Okay. So are you considering this tent an indoor, there's no, so the sides of the tent will be rolled up for ventilation? There's no ventilation on top of it. This is nothing more than a tent. It's really not a house. That's what you're considering, an indoor grow facility?
That's what they're showing, oh, right.
So...
I think that's in your regulations as well, that hoop houses are allowed or considered indoor.
Jonathan addressed that in the last meeting.
On the agricultural mix, I believe.
Okay, my other question is in regards to the PVC piping draining into the wetlands. So how much of the toxic wastewater from, with the pesticides is going to be drained into the wetlands?
I think we addressed this, but, so in terms of the wastewater, I mean, we mentioned one gallon of water per day per plant, and then 80 to 90% of that would be absorbed. So when you think about, I think I gave an analogy in the narrative that, you know, with a quarter inch of rain, I think it's something like 19,000 gallons, and we're looking at like 200 gallons. So it's a fraction of what a rainstorm would generate in terms of runoff water. And then the pesticides we're using, just to answer your question, and also the fertilizers. So the fertilizers are all minerals that are naturally occurring, things like magnesium, calcium. And then the pesticides are also state-approved, so those are no different than what the tomato farmers or other vegetable farmers of the state are using.
But these are being drained directly into the wetlands?
No, I think...
Or not, in a wetland or aquifer location, Jonathan confirmed that in the last meeting as well. We can, I mean, I don't know if he's coming back. I know that was something that was brought up last meeting as well. If we were in an aquifer area. We're talking about wastewater and our location and as it relates to wetlands or aquifer interference with any of that.
So it's outside the aquifer. Aquifer doesn't have an upland review, you wouldn't have to register with an aquifer. In terms of wetlands, you're not showing any direct disturbance. This would fall under, even though this is a specially permitted use, as described, it appears to fall under 11Q. It's an agricultural use. From the state, these hoop houses growing would fall under an agricultural use. However, it's heavily regulated agricultural use. That's, that's the way it appears, as is presented on the plans. There wasn't, I don't think, an updated delineation or anything like that in regards to wetlands. It was, everything that was submitted was based off historical data.
I think we flagged it when we bought the property, so a couple of years ago.
Okay. But there was nothing that appeared to trigger with wetlands, at least as is presented. If there was found to be impacts in this, we would address those as a potential violation, depending on what the impacts are. That would go even for an agricultural use. There are certain things that are generally allowed as of right, Killingley's, as of right farming community by town ordinance, but that can only take you so far. So, you know, either a flagrant violation or even an accidental violation would be dealt with at the time if there was evidence of it. But I think it was referenced, the easement, this particular brook is essentially channelized, goes under 101, comes out, daylights near the highway, I believe, over in that area, under the Dollar General or over near that property.
That seems to be the big question. Nobody seems to really know exactly where it daylights.
I know just by looking at an older approval, prior to my time here, the Dollar General had to go through a wetlands one when they proposed that structure because that was the out, the outfall was in that area. That particular building was limited for its landscaping, what they were allowed to do with the landscaping for that building.
Goes through the Zip Spark lot, I think there's a catch basin there if I'm not mistaken. I don't remember. Anyway...
And just to clarify, so what we did is we took an area calculation of the existing parking lot. And, you know, instead of being extreme and talking about a warning storm, we just talked about a standard rainstorm that might generate approximately a quarter inch of rain. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think Connie stated it was approximately 19,000 gallons of rainfall. What, what the proposed 1,200 plants would generate in unabsorbed runoff would be the equivalent of less than a three-by-three cube of water released onto the parking lot. So a three-foot by three-foot by three-foot, one yard, cubic yard cube of water, which is, depending on where it's released in the parking lot, may not even hit the catch basin. That's the volume of water we're talking about on a daily basis that would be in excess of the plants absorbing.
I think it's worth pointing out that, you know, we're talking about the summer months, so you can imagine water on asphalt would evaporate fairly quickly.
It's also evenly distributed across the footprint of 15,000 square feet of hoop house. It's not, my example is that cube of water, or you, you know, tip over three 50-gallon drums of water in one location, right? It's being distributed across 15,000 square feet total of greenhouse evenly, so.
I did want to follow up just on the wetlands aspect too. Just the plan that is presented, sheet number two, does identify 200-foot upland review area. That's the dotted line. As I transition to sheet three, it's not labeled as 200 feet, but you have that same line. There's nothing in jurisdictional review for wetlands as is presented by the applicant.
Anybody else from the public want to speak to this? You all set? Okay, one more time, commissioners? John, Brian?
I think he left.
Taking a nap. Okay, staff, we're good?
So Brian is here, so he's going...
He should be voting if he answers.
If he answers, he may have been called.
I'm trying to transfer my, hold on.
We've got you.
My battery's dying, my ear popped off.
So, Norm, he'll be voting. Everybody's all set, then I'm going to have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
My second? Second by Mike. And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose or extension? Okay, that's closed. Thank you. Special permit application, number 251348, BB Car Wash, 543 Warrigan Road. GIS map 262, Lot 20, 2.1 acres, general commercial hand wash, car wash in the two bays on the north side of the building. Okay. Could you introduce yourselves, your names and your addresses for the record? How are you?
Elia Nassios.
I live in Smithville, Rhode Island.
I'm sorry?
I live in Smithville, Rhode Island.
And your name?
Elia Nassios.
Okay, she might need to have you spell it for her.
E.L.I.A. N.S.N.C.A.S.S.I.O.S.
And you, sir?
I'm Jack Helfgut, and I, he's a landlord for storage on 12.
Okay, so you're the property owner?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so if you wanted to make your presentation?
Very simple, a lot more simple than that. It's just a...
Yeah, you're fine right there if you want.
It's just a hand wash, car wash. It's basically simple, no machinery, no chemical, no, nothing, basically. Like a...
Unfortunately, unfortunately, from what I'm seeing, I don't see a detailed plan really showing what we need. Like the other application you've got.
They have, what they have here is they have, they, they just had the site development plan for the property, so that should be it. They are the highlighted green area, that's what they're going to use in the building. Okay, it's the old Benny's building. Then on the next page, turn over the page, we did the Benny's record drawings. And again, they're in the second, second site down. Again, they're highlighted in green, the two areas that they'd be using. So then we went up onto GIS. And the next page shows an aerial view, and it's highlighted in pink. And then you've got two, two different views from Lucian Avenue, again, highlighted in pink. But again, we did not have any of the details for the interior. We did not know what you're going to be doing on the interior of the building.
So the interior of the garage space is 32 by 32. And we have, it's sprinkled, because we had to sprinkle the entire building, as some of you may recall when we received the approval for the self-storage. And it's an open area, there's a small bathroom. And other than that, and some water faucets on the, on the wall, and some electrical outlets, and it's heated. A lot of natural gas. So it's pretty, just a basic 32 by 32, two-bay garage with larger overhead doors. And cement floor, polished cement floors.
What kind of hours of operation?
Well, because we have a lot of rain here, I need, I was probably going to do nine to nine. Not that it'll be that late, but I'm just trying to get mostly, by appointment only mostly. But, you know, like you see, it rains half of the month. So, you know, I would like to close at five, but I think if people get out of work, they'll probably want their cars done after. So, I mean, I don't think we'd be there tonight, but probably nine to nine. Obviously not the rain days.
And how many employees?
Two or three, part-time. How many days a week? It would be seven days, but again, I doubt it would be open seven days because like, if you take every week, like this week, we have three rain days coming. We wouldn't be open because nobody washes their car in the rain, so, you know.
Any other questions from people?
There are some questions on the staff report if you want to ask those.
The water, issue of water and wastewater, how many gallons of water?
It's not power, it's a handgun, so it's just basically rinsing the cars down. So again, like, with the heater going on, it would dry right in the cement pretty fast. It's not like we're washing, you know, 20 cars at a time or like those automatic car washes. So there's not really going to be a lot of water. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know, maybe a minute for each car, like spraying it down, and that's about it.
So what is the wastewater? Is there interior drainage in the floor, or where is it, just leak out through the floor? Is it in the parking lot?
There is no interior drainage. It would, if, what didn't dry naturally on the floor would be swept to the parking lot.
Basically, if it even reaches it, if it reaches it, which I doubt, but, and then this pavement, and if it does reach a little bit.
So what's the septic on the property now?
Well, there's private septic, but there's a storm, there's storm drains that exist from when it was Benny's and...
Right, we just went through that with the mini stories.
Right, exactly. So it would be, if it made it that far, that it would, it would run into those storm drains. It would be no different, though, than, I'll say, if you wash your car at home in the driveway, it would be the same, Elia is proposing just to use...
So none of the water is going to go to the septic system?
No.
And the water supply?
Other than the bathrooms.
And so what's the water supply for there? Is it a well?
It's a well.
The only difference is this is a commercial operation. Are you allowed to put that wash water into a storm drain?
I couldn't answer that question.
They'd be, they would be being washed inside those garages.
But it was just, it was just stated that it's going to be, whatever it doesn't dry, it's going to be basically scoogied out into the parking lot during the storm, the stormwater system.
If it does dry, we, you'd have to do a lot of cars to do like that kind of water. I highly doubt that it would even reach outside. I don't think so.
You're talking about, Commissioner, you're talking about perhaps maybe a total washing a car, maybe a couple of gallons of water? And for that to go out of the parking, outside, run across the parking lot and down to the storm drain? And not, it would be pretty difficult for it to make it there. As I said, agreed, it is commercial, but we don't, we're not anticipating that larger volume of vehicles to create an issue. In a perfect world, that'd be wonderful, I suppose, that we had that much and had to deal, had to worry about that, but I don't suspect that will be the case.
No, understood, but from our perspective... No, understood, but from our perspective, you have no wastewater system.
Correct.
That's what you're telling us.
That is correct.
But yeah, you're washing cars, you could be washing a lot of cars, because there's no limitation on the number of cars that you could do from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So you could be generating a lot of wastewater.
Well, having two bays, if it takes an hour a car, say, there's not really a lot, a lot of cars, and then take out the rain days, which we have a lot of rain days. I don't think there's gonna be barely any water going outside there, my opinion.
Yeah, but again, any water leaving that building, if we approve this without some sort of treatment system, we're allowing, again, commercial wastewater to flow into a storm system.
I don't know how, I mean, what we can do, I mean, put some sandbags there, if it even goes there? I don't know what else to recommend, or squeeze him out the left door, maybe? If there's even that kind of water?
I don't have an answer for you, Elliot.
I don't know. But it's, again, it's just soap and water, basically no heavy chemicals. And like I said, like, if you take the amount of the, you know, take away the rain days in an hour a car, it's really not a lot of water. And if you do a gallon and a half to two gallons to rinse down a car, I highly, highly doubt that it's even gonna even reach the outside.
I understand what you're saying, I've just put myself in our position, it's a commercial operation of washing cars, which again, under residence, you have grease and grime and dirt and stuff, and washing chemicals going into a storm system. You have no wastewater container.
What do other car washers have? When you go through the car wash, I don't...
Most of them recycle, most of them go to sewers, have some sewer. Most of them.
Yeah, a lot of them have reclaimed, reclaimed systems, that they can basically store and reclaim their water.
And I think also, if you look at the picture, I think most of the pitch is going towards the road. I'm just looking at it now in the picture. If it even, like I said, I, it's just like a regular hand nozzle, that the cars will be sprayed down.
I have a problem, because we can't, you know, your regulations require a site plan. The site plan has to show all these things that are identified on 720.1.1, and they're not there. You know, you're not, you don't list the neighbors. There's a lot here, I mean, you already got a good base, but there's a lot of little details that aren't showing up that are required. And we're making a deal with all the other applicants, that we have to follow the site plan regulations.
Sure.
We've gotta be, you know...
So what was that regulation again?
720.1.1.
720.1.1.
And then 720.4, which is, they're both on the numbers to our pages, so... But it's all special permit, that's the whole special permit section. You have some consistency on our part, you know, with...
I understand, so that's up to you, Elliot, whether you want to...
And I don't think it's, I don't think it's anything impossible, but I just think you need to...
You'll have to look up these regulations, the site requirements, and answer...
Answer the questions the best you can. You know, draw them out on the plan, because that's, site plan is basically taking your plan. You're fortunate, because, you know, there's been so much activity on that lot already, that we've got, you've got plans available to you. But you can draft up on those plans and just add to them.
Is that easy to do, or do you...
I don't know, Elliot, that's...
Emery, question?
We can talk to the applicant, staff can talk to the applicant, if you make an appointment, we can talk to him and explain to him how he needs to go through this, step by step.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, at the same time, I don't know who you speak to, but you might wanna draft some, come up with some kind of numbers for the water usage. I think that's the bigger concern.
Would it be better to, maybe if I cut down the hours, would you guys feel better that way?
No, just, we just need some estimates. Yeah, okay, all right.
They have, what you're saying, Elliot, is they require this of all applicants. So you have to, they can't, they can't make an exception for you. They understand that you're not gonna have a lot of cars, and it's gonna... But you still have to cross the Ts and dot the Is.
We gotta have consistency.
So when you have that list of requests, I'll help you with any information you might need from our plan, but you will need to do this.
That's, that's fine, so I would have to answer those?
Yeah, and I think, like, Emery, you can check with Emery, but I think if we continue this, and you can come back at the next meeting, already scheduled, and then you can present what you have, and maybe we can look at it more thoroughly at that point.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, there's nothing if...
So, okay, so continuance would be till June 16th?
Is that...
Is that okay with you?
Mr. Chairman?
Ma'am, sir?
Would some department have to sign off on this? The engineering department, or the health department?
I don't know, it doesn't...
Because of the fact that...
The site plan regulations don't require, as I see it, engineer stamp, right? Is that right, Emery, am I reading that right?
What they have, if you're looking for, if you're worried about the wastewater, that's something that we will talk to the town engineer for, if that's what you're concerned with.
Yes.
Because even we put it in, is it gonna go into a septic, or is it, if it's a septic, do they have the approval from NDDH? Is it wastewater, then they may need to do something with the engineer.
Yeah, I have the same concerns, I mean, I was in Germany in the 1980s, so talking 40 years ago. And, you know, I was in the army, and I wanted to wash my car in the driveway, and the Germans were like shocked, like, they're like, you can't wash your car there. It was against the law 40 years ago. There must be some regulations in this country 40 years later about addressing where, I've never been to a car wash where the water just runs off. There's always a drain, it's always contained on the site, so I think we really need to cover our bases on that one.
Mr. Chair, if I could, one thing I'd just, sorry, we go finally, is I'll suggest to staff and to the applicant to take a look. It's possible that this might fall under, there's a general permit that deep issues for vehicle maintenance wastewater. And as a general permit, it just has the standards that someone has to comply with. And I haven't studied it to know whether, you know, whether this would qualify, but I know that small detailers that have a certain volume per day, they have to register with the state. And that includes the protections for groundwater, for groundwater protection, so that might apply. So you might wanna take a look at that, and it's called the general, general permit for discharge of vehicle maintenance wastewater. And I can email this to you. Sure.
Anything else, anybody? Brian?
I'm sorry, I'm doing the general permit.
Anything else wanted to have, that we're missing?
No, the existing is the wastewater.
Okay. John, you're good?
Good.
We thank you for your time.
Okay, well, this, a motion to continue, to...
June 16th.
June 16th.
Monday, June 16th.
And my second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or extension? Okay, we're good, we'll see you June 16th.
Thank you all, we'll see you next month.
Okay. Unfinished business, special application, special permit application number 251347 Nautilus Botanicals LLC. Do I have to read all those numbers again? Basically, 738 GIS map 115. Continued from April 21st, 2025. Have a motion, please. A motion from some sort, from everybody, anybody?
Do we have a checklist, or...
I have a checklist, if someone makes the motion, I'll do the conditions.
We could just have it through staff and through the questions that we...
Yeah, make a motion, what, to accept?
To approve.
To approve with the staff checklist, and any other motion, anything else that came before the body?
That was agreed to.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Can I do that? Okay, checklist provided by the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, that all items on the checklist are completed, including any modifications to the site plan. Proper architectural and floor layout plans for the temporary office space and permanent office space, subject to fire marshal review and approval. All state regulations must be followed with regards to their state license. Renovations to the permanent building must be completed within two years, and if that fails, then the special permit will become null and void, and the use must immediately stop. Did I get it all?
So that includes everything that we required, they agreed to, or whatever during the meeting? Okay.
I'll second the motion.
John Seren Topolus seconds, Mike makes the motion, Emery described the motion.
Conditions.
Any further discussion?
That's only because Brian wasn't here.
Hold on, I have a list.
Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, do you want your specific items listed on there, because I didn't hear...
As long as they're included, because that was, that's what I wanted to make sure of. I mean, they were agreed to, so I believe they were agreed.
You got specific things you want added to the plans?
Right. Utilities being proposed, the drainage, that 30-inch drainage structure inlet, and somehow identify where it is. The lighting at the rear gates, at, near the gates, details for the gates, the crosswalk identified for the final building.
Dumpster.
The dumpster, consideration to try to, if it's, try to go with the ways, and move the hydrant to the inside, and across, you're getting way ahead of me. I got a line here. Crosswalk identification, fire hydrant will be moved inside a fence, and I think that was it.
Utility building will be staying, hydro by north side, unique site fence. Fencing per state's requirement, interior cameras as well as exterior agricultural, or they just put agriculture, did we? Fence post embedded in pavement.
Yeah, they said that was...
And I believe that was pretty much everything, did I forget anything, Brian?
No, the only thing I wanted was that note added to the plans regarding the 500-foot separation, just to make sure we checked that box, so it's, you can just add it as a general note. And then my last question is, which specific lot are we approving, and which ones are we denying, issues for?
Correct. Yeah, we forgot about that part. It's 738 is the, 738 is the one we're approving.
And the rest we're denying.
So 738, 115 is being approved, and the other ones are being denied.
Correct.
Yep.
All right, so I'll do that as an amendment, I guess, to the motion, or, or do you want to do that?
You can do that, you can do that.
You want to just add it to it?
Yeah.
Michael?
Well, you'd have to remove...
Okay, just go ahead, make an amendment, John, Brian.
Okay, yeah, I'll make an amendment to the motion to add all those items that we just, we just listed out, as well as we're only approving 738 GIS map 115, with the special permitted use, and all the other lots in GIS maps identified or denied.
We need a second for that, right?
Second, and a vote on that separately.
Second, somebody want a second? Oh, Lorraine, she said it first. All right, Lorraine?
We need a vote to get to...
Vote for Brian's first. Okay, can we, do we need another motion?
No, the motion's been made and seconded, if this gets passed, then...
Discussion on it? Have discussion on it, anybody discussing on Brian's amendment? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose extensions? Because everybody voted yea. Okay, so that's added to the motion.
That's added to the original motion, now you're voting on the original motion, which includes the amendment.
Okay, so now, any further discussion on the original motion with the amendment? All right. Now, all in favor, we're gonna do roll call, please.
Brian Card?
Yes.
Michael Huko?
Yes.
Lorraine Lagard?
Yes.
John Seren Topolus?
Yes.
Keith Thurlo?
Yes. Okay. End of subject, thank you. All right. Special permit application 251348 B&B Car Wash 543 Warvegan Road, continued.
That's continued.
New business site plan application 251350 AT&amp;T Services, 498 and 484 Putnam Pike.
I have large, he has, he's gonna put them up on the computer, so Brian can see them, and I have large copies, hold on.
Carport canopy with gable roof for parking of emergency-generated trailers and equipment with additional site improvements. Receive and if agreeable, refer to staff for review. So, up to us, the commission if you wanna deal with it, or just let staff take care of it?
Is this the one?
This is the generator? Yeah, this is up by...
By Golden?
Golden Greek?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is... Can you bring up the GIS on that one, because that would probably be helpful?
Of course.
Okay.
So the proposed building is in this area, right here?
No, it's on the parking lot itself. It's not, they're not cutting down any trees, they're putting it on the parking lot.
Okay, I read the... Which I know, well, we looked quickly, in terms of housekeeping, there's a, the two properties, we would probably be looking at a merger.
Right.
Because there's definitely a nonconformity that exists between...
The building goes over the property.
The two AT&amp;T properties.
I'll come over there, you... Long story short, it's gonna be basically another...
Where is the location?
On Pike?
You know where Golden Greek is?
Oh, yes.
Remember that, it used to be AT&amp;T, it used to be the...
Oh, I know, I know, exactly, yeah.
They have the one-story, they have, which is the dark roof, the one-story concrete building. Then they have the lighter roof, is basically what they want to duplicate over here in that parking lot. Because if you notice, here's the, here's the stone wall, here's the parking lot. They'll have three sides, with this being open, onto the parking lot, and they just want to be able to have things come in and park. Trucks, machinery.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
It's already on an impervious surface.
So it's just the structure that's being built? Nothing else is being changed?
No, they have, they're doing electrical to it, I believe. But they're doing... Your mic's on.
It's fine, you gotta leave one on, so people can hear.
We'll put mics on, because we even have paper.
So, from the sounds of it to me, it's just a new building being put up. Does anybody have any objections, or staff, leaving it with staff?
It's an impervious surface already, so they're not adding anything impervious surface, they're not taking down any trees. They just want to put a place where they can put their machines undercover.
Brian, any comments on that? Oh, it's good, okay.
Staff.
There's that elevation here in the top corner, I don't know if you can, yeah, see that, or a section of the proposed building. Do you have a motion to refer this to staff?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, refer to staff.
John Seren Topolus, please, a motion, you have a second, please?
Second.
Michael first, so Michael Huko makes the second, any further discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or extension? Oppose or abstentions? Okay, so move. Okay, Tom Hales, uh, site application 251351, Kite Realty, 581 Putnam Pike, GIS map 114, lot three, 47 acres, mixed-use interchange, conversion of an existing retail commercial space to, to a Chipotle's restaurant. Receive and if agreeable, refer to staff. Same thing, it's all interior work, they're really not doing anything outside?
The only thing that we have on here is a question, you, this, you have a letter from David Capasion, which is the town engineer. So he would say he would not have a problem with the conditional approval because he just needs to verify how they need to handle.
Waste?
Waste. Okay.
This is in, uh.
Comments?
Yeah.
Yep, only comments.
With the old package store?
Yes.
Rumors on the street.
Well, it is on the street.
It was already advertised on winning.
Really? That's right, it was.
Chipotis coming in. Ah, they haven't even gone before planning and zoning yet.
We do have representatives for Kite Realty, um, here. I know they travel the long distance to be here, so.
Yeah.
If you guys had any questions.
Any comments?
Tell, tell me how the Kite Realty group, offices at 30 South Meridian Street in Indianapolis.
Indianapolis, you drive all the way out here from Indianapolis?
Flew all the way.
No.
Yeah.
I thought there was a provision where they couldn't put another restaurant in the comments.
Yeah, that's beyond us, but I hear the same, yeah.
That's one of the conversations we're having with Dave Capasion.
Yeah.
Pardon?
That's the conversations that we're having with, with Dave.
What, that?
About, about the, about the, the water, water.
Well, that wasn't what he said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I know.
He said, oh, but, no, that, about having another restaurant in there. I believe there was.
99 supposedly.
Well, I believe there was a, a, a moratorium for a certain time limit on that, that's expired, I believe.
It was a time limit?
Ah, wow.
Yeah.
So anybody have an objection to staff handling this one as well, or?
Yeah, I could give you a real, a real quick overview if you want.
If you want.
Alright, yeah, Norm Tebow, Killingly Engineering Associates, as you know, it, yes, this is, uh, proposed to be located in Killingly Commons. Um, the, uh, the, uh, spot is where the, the former package store, I believe Lucky's Package Store used to be at the other end of the building from Kay Jewelers. Um, essentially, the, uh, the site work mostly consists of just some reconfiguration of some islands and some pavement painting and so forth. All the utilities are already extended to the building. Um, uh, there is not a drive-through on this particular, uh, business. Uh, as you would have a, a, your typical drive-through with an order window and so forth, everything is done online and there's a pickup window. So you place your order, you drive up to the pickup window, you pick up. There's no, there's no ordering screen. Uh, hence no need for excessive stacking near the building. Chipotle's say they typically don't have any more than three cars stacked at any given time. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're showing stacking for five, uh, the way that we had the, the plan drawn out. But, uh, fairly, fairly simple, the bulk of the work is interior work.
Any questions? Brian?
I'll go.
John?
Good.
Mike? Lorraine? Norm?
Um, just, I, so I guess you, you're dealing with the, the plaza owner, so you're all set on the, the restaurant? You are, you own the plaza?
Yeah, Kite Realty owns the plaza.
I heard that there was like a, they had no, never put an end date for the, the 99.
So, I think you're, are you probably referring to the pad, there's a pad to the west of here, like right straight across from 99. Um, and the 99 does have a restriction on full-service restaurants or, or I will call it an approval right, we would have to get their consent for a full-service restaurant. It doesn't cover, uh, things like, you know, the, the fast casual, you know, it's specifically for, for full service on that lot.
Just that lot?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, anybody want to ask staff?
The only thing I wanted to say is, like I said, they're in discussions with Dave Capasion because there are some concerns about how they're going to handle.
Waste.
The waste, so, um, some ideas have been offered. We have to see which work, what works, if something works. So the, if, if it is an approval from us, it'd be a conditional approval that they have to get their final approval from Dave Capasion.
Which goes without saying, right?
Any kind of motions from anybody?
Make a motion, refer it to staff.
Come a second? Lorraine, seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, opposes or abstentions? None, we're good. Thanks for telling me, fly home. Um. I think we're set. If you'd like to go. Get back to us, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks for your attendance. Well, we'll, we'll miss your personal touch, but. 30 years. Okay, adoption of minutes.
I thought you were talking to me, Keith.
30 years? You have 30 years of marriage? 42.
Keep going, keep going.
Do you?
52.
Yeah.
62.
62.
Nine.
I'm still young, I'm glad to hear it.
I'm only nine.
Okay, adoption of minutes, regular meeting Monday, March 17th, workshop meeting April 21st, regular meeting April 21st. Got a motion, please? Sir?
I, I just found a couple minor typos.
Under discussion, we can do that. Motion, second discussion.
Okay.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by John Seratopoulos, Michael Huco makes the motion. Okay, Norm, make your adjustments.
So it'd be on the Monday, March 17th, regular meeting, um, on page three. It says, uh, right around the middle of the page, Mrs. Seratopoulos asked if her would be doing any welding. Right. And then, uh, let's see, page, page seven, near the bottom under roll call vote, it said, motion carried unanimously, 410. We call it unanimously when there's an abstention?
I apologize.
That's her.
Um, I think that might, that was it for that one. And I think.
We, we got Berger's replacement.
Yeah, that's all that I caught.
Berger, Brian.
That was Berger's job when she was.
Um.
What's that?
I have.
That was Berger's job all the time.
I have one correction. I'm not sure exactly what date it was, but, um, Nick Degarian, D, we already talked about this, that needs to be corrected. It's Degarian, D U R. Not Gregarian, not G R E.
Okay, any more corrections?
Anne Marie, I won't be here.
Wait, I got to vote, let me vote this.
I'm leaving, uh, on a cruise, the 14th of June, till like 2017.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Um, correspondent zoning practice department reports, Jonathan?
Uh, Wetlands did not meet, zoning board of appeals did not meet this month, um, no applications for ZBA. Wetlands opted to cancel their meeting. Uh, it was the same night as the annual town meeting. Uh, so it, the members encouraged, uh, everyone to go instead. Uh, but we will have a meeting, uh, this coming month, which I believe will include some aquifer applications for Wetlands.
Okay. Um, economic development?
Economic development met in May. Um, we can announce that EPA has scheduled their emergency remediation of the Blueville Mill. Um, they will be commencing shortly and it should take about four months. Um, there was ribbon cutting today at 574 West Cot Road for High Stone Concepts. And then tomorrow, Chop Shop is doing a grand reopening at 555 Hartford Pike at 4:30. Um, and we're currently closing out the National Endowment, the Arts Grant. Um, after we finished the Lau New Year, there was 260 attendees. Um, and it ended with the Danielson Fire Department, uh, engaging in a water fight with the kids. So that was a good time.
Thank you. Town council, report?
Yes, um, the Killingly Police Department, um, passed all of its accreditation, um, to be tier, it's tier-two accreditation. They were 100% compliant. They received a Stanton Canine Foundation Award, um, $32,000 to, um, buy a canine train and equip with vest, kennel and, um, everything else that comes with it. Um, Evan O'Sullivan was sworn in as a killing police officer. He, um, will be going, um, to attending the new, um, law enforcement council training, so he'll, he will be the first, um, brand-new officer Killingly has. Um, Bill Lee, um, will be, um, signing the assessments. Um, they have not found a new assessor yet. They interviewed two, one, well, they were, it had two interviews, one canceled 15 minutes before and the other candidate was found not to have enough experience for the state of Connecticut. Um, the RFP for HVAC maintenance for the town buildings will be posted in the Nor, were posted in Norwich Bulletin. And, um, the town council approved, um, the changes of the, um, the time, the nu- number, um, the years of office for, um, the housing authority and the changes that were required for, um, the planning and zoning so that everybody's.
Staggered.
Is, is staggered. And, um, there will be a town meeting, I believe on June 2nd, um, to go over the budget for the BOE. The town council is meeting on Thursday. Um, at the, the town meeting, um, resident, residents can speak, but there can be no changes made to the, to the, uh, budget at that time and the vote will be the following Tuesday.
Okay, well, thank you very much. All set? A motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, adjourn.
Aye.